Good morning, everyone. This is the Knox County Commissioners in Mount Vernon, Ohio. It's September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We have Scott Boone here with us with the Department of Job and Family Services. Thank you, Scott, for being here. And we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Thank you, Bill, Brenda, for having me. I am the Director at Knox County Job and Family Services. And I know we've been bringing my department heads down throughout the the spring and the summer just to give you some individual updates. So I won't talk too much in depth because I feel like you're in the know about the majority of those activities. Workforce is a puzzling world these days. You heard Brandy talk last month about the sixty-nine percent cuts to adult funding and fifty-three percent cuts in to youth funding. And that's going to potentially compromise some of the programming that we're offering to the communities. But we are getting more creative in terms of shifting childcare and net and some of those different types of things out there to make sure that they're readily available to the families in Knox County. You're also aware that we thought that maybe we could better utilize one of the wings out there in that building, given all the assistance city provided us with new flooring and roofing and those different types of things. And so we did explore a potential renter. Those circumstances weren't fiscally manageable for them. So we went back to the drawing board and we decided that, you know, how can we best utilize that area? And so we're going to have Children's Services perform some visitations out there. It's, in my opinion, a better place than the sterile office environment down here. I mean, we've had some volunteers that have done some remarkable work to decorate and get us some new furniture in that room. But we felt like maybe having them out in the way, out there on Kishakton, and you know, there's a lot of green grass to run in and trails and those different types of things and maybe get them outside. And it's a lot quieter out there. So those are some of the other things that we have planned in that building. But Brandy and I have been, Brandy's the Administrator at Opportunity and Ops, and she and I have been involved in a number of different meetings and discussions. John Trot, who is the Executive Director of the Greater Ohio Workforce Board, is retiring. So there's some succession planning going on there and some changes. And given the vast involvement of their reach with the forty-three counties that are involved in that, there's a lot that we're trying to do to lend our support to the leadership changes and those different types of things. There's a lot of unknowns that we're receiving in terms of messaging that make it difficult for us to plan our budget moving forward. I think into the middle of next year and hopefully through the remainder of twenty-six, we'll have some things figured out beyond that. I really couldn't say other than we're sort of preparing for some worst-case scenarios involved related to that. Still be able to deliver services timely and efficiently as we're accustomed to. But as I'll talk about in some of the other areas, we just, we can't bank on any promises or assurances that we'll have this X amount in this pot moving forward from a financial perspective. Derek Wilson, who was down here to talk about child support last month, are there really any updates about that? You've heard her talk about how proud she was about the photo contest she entered in. And I just found out before I came down that we did win Knox County One Most Creative for our entry into the Child Support Countywide Photo Contest. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's on the Derrick.
Well, she was, she's at the meeting now and she, you know, she sent the link out to everybody to watch and everything. And so she's very proud of that. And I, you know, I just get excited about her, her energy and her disposition. And I know that makes her happy and I appreciate all the staff and Andrew, of course, who I mentioned was running the drone and getting us organized for that. So he was part of that as well. I don't know if I talked about recently the Back to School Voucher Program that we ran back in, I want to say July and August. Carla Poland, who is our Public Administrator, who's Assistance Administrator, runs that through PA. And so I do have some final numbers as of a couple of days ago or maybe a week ago by now. So we got a total number of applications, which is families, three hundred and eighty-four. Individual children that were issued vouchers totaled eight hundred and eighty. We had eight hundred and ninety-one total vouchers created. Eleven were created in addition to that were created in error. So total voucher, valid vouchers issued was eight hundred and eighty. Three families were unable to pick them up. Four were not redeemed. So out of the total eight eighty-seven were not followed through with. And just in terms of vendors, if you're interested in a breakdown in terms of the amounts, Marshall's had four hundred and eighty-seven, Gabriel's had two sixty, Shoe Sensation, one twenty-five, and seven-seven-seven receipt had one. Total, and I can, I can send this to Jason and Penny as just if you all want a one-page or on the final tallies. But value redeemed vouchers total was seventy-two thousand, six dollars and fifty-seven cents for Marshall's and then totaling all the others. Our total voucher amount was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine, forty-four cents. So.
Was it last year that we had issues of people were printing them up and doing their own thing with them?
We did, and we created a stopgap for that this year. So there haven't been any incidents or suspicion that that's happened. I believe the Prosecutor's Office is still working its way through their investigation to remedy what happened last year. So we've, I know we've met with Chip and Carla and some other members of our Fiscal Department have been providing some ongoing information related to that. So.
How does the dollar figure that we paid this year compared to what we've paid us?
It's less, significantly less. And I think the opinions about that were maybe word that had gotten out about the alleged fraud that had occurred last year dissuaded some families from applying this year. And we also, I think, we've talked to, I've talked to Carla and some of the others internally. I think maybe we'll be more aggressive in terms of our advertising, social media. And I think initially this year, there was only maybe a week or two, not saying that that hadn't worked in the past. But I think given the response, we just maybe need to adjust the way that we publicize the availability. And we did have a second advertising event and allowed people and we did invite families to come in after the fact if they weren't able to make the event. So Carla was very accommodating with that. But I just think that, you know, we need to make some changes just to make sure the community's more aware. And, you know, if we get the same result and the opinion is still that maybe some families that applied before that aren't entitled, didn't again moving forward, then we'll deal with that.
Do, are you able to get a breakdown as to what school district each of these kids come from?
Probably not without a hand count if you're really interested in that.
I'm just curious as to making sure that the areas of our county are getting taken served.
I mean, we, I can ask. I don't know for sure. I think that's a, that would be an interesting layer of information. So I'll, I'll see.
Because it is need-based, right, to get vouchers?
Correct. I'll find out.
Okay.
They hope that families are in a better position than they were and they feel needed, right?
Absolutely. We're always going to have those that are in need. But again, I think we've gone through our due diligence to make sure that we're providing that to those families and those families only not ones that maybe want to try to circumvent the system a bit.
Which could have skewed the numbers as well.
That's, that's our initial thought. But we'll, we'll wait and see how things play out. In terms of Children's Services, we're, we're still hemorrhaging a bit from our placement costs. And again, and I know Jason's passed this along, the five hundred thousand dollars that you all contributed to our budget recently has made a significant improvement in our temporary financial status. And we're very grateful for that. We know that that's not sustainable long-term, which is why moving forward, we'll be in some other discussions. I'll be in some other discussions with Jason about how we offset that. Right now, we're, we're a bit nervous about what the next fiscal year looks like. But I'll, for now, for the moment, I'll focus on some of the numbers today related specifically to social services. The placement costs are what they are. You've heard me talk about how we've done our due diligence to place kids with relatives and to step kids down from levels of care, to send kids home with wraparound services so that those reunifications are safe. But the unknowns are what we deal with on a daily basis and kids that come into care and from very horrible circumstances. There's, there's no way to predict that other than we're here to serve the community, to keep all the, all children safe the best that we can. But in terms of a breakdown, as of yesterday, we had fifty-seven kids in custody. Nineteen of those are kinship placements, which is they're placed with relative or kin. Eleven of the children in custody are placed in our own JFS foster homes, which we've licensed about thirty total. And part of that reasons I've talked about is, you know, the advantage of us licensing our own homes instead of keeps our kids in our community. Placement costs are reduced. We find that the reunifications are more quickly and we're all very happy and proud of the work that the foster care department has done to recruit and screen licensed foster parents. Seventeen of the kids that we have in custody are involved in treatment or foster care network. So those are your therapeutic foster care placements of higher level of care than traditional foster care. Two kids are in residential, which is even more restricted. That involves kids being housed in a facility, sometimes locked, sometimes they're locked and restrictive access to come and go. We still have that kid placed in residential placement in Florida. We expect that to occur for at least another year or two until she ages out of custody. And then we've got seven kids placed in group homes. Breakdown by age is kids zero to two, there are twelve. Age three to five, nine. Age six, nine. Eleven children. Ten to twelve, seven children. Thirteen to fifteen, seven, and sixteen and up, which are typically our highest cost per replacement. We've got eleven of those. In two thousand twenty-five, we've had one adoption finalized. We've got three others pending. We've got eight kids available, but have yet to be matched with adoptive homes. We have three children in permanent custody, which means that the rental rights in custody has been severed. And those decisions are pending from juvenile court. And we're preparing to file permanent custody motions for two other kids. So always awful when kids can't go home safely. Part of our job is to find and secure alternative permanent arrangements for them to grow up, to prosper and to be lucrative parts of our community. And so in those cases, that's where the adoption piece fits in.
On, on the fifty-seven kids in custody, do you have a broken down as to how many are siblings?
No, but I can get that up here.
Yeah, I was curious as to how many families sit down.
By keeping them in our community, they're able to stay in the school system and some non-normalcy.
Yeah, sports teams, same neighborhoods or close to a camp. You know, it's just, it's just more.
Security.
Yeah, and it's, it's better for the parents where, you know, if I've got a kid placed in Richland County, it's going to be difficult for mom and dad to, I mean, we typically have the visits here in the office. But getting the kids back and forth and then something happened at school today and now they can't make the visit. It just, it just makes it unnecessarily complicated. So we like to have it here in our, our own community. Our, our highest as of, again, as of yesterday, our highest placement cost, we've got two four-year-old autistic children. They're both non-verbal. They both have severe behavioral challenges. They were a recent placement. Each one of those kids costs us four hundred and ninety-five dollars a day. So that's a breakdown in that work. In social services, really throughout the agency, we've, the culture that we've built has lent towards a good outcome in terms of recidivism for us. We don't have a whole lot of people leave. We don't have a lot of vacancies. So our leadership team has done well to, to build an environment where people feel safe when they come to work, where they're comfortable, where they feel supported. And so we think that that has a lot to do with our success and our success. And that's what I asked them to pay a great deal of attention to. And then to try to summarize this best for you and be sensitive to your time in terms of maybe some more global budget concerns that we have moving forward. With our shared cost format, you know, because we have multiple programs with Children's Services and Child Support, Public Assistance and Workforce, we've traditionally been able to have that the shared costs come from public assistance and child support to at times make whole some of the other departments and places that there are deficits. We've been allowed in the past to have some sort of a delay in terms of when those reimbursements are made whole. And the messaging that we're getting now is that, that will go away. And so that we'll have to keep those balances current and active. And that will present a challenge for us just because it's a different way of doing business fiscally. We've, we've had, I think this past year, and Jason knows, knows this as well, that we've worked really hard, you know, three, four, five years ago financially, we, we were in a different position. And my number one priority was for us to get caught up in terms of the deficits between quarter to quarter and so on. And so our fiscal staff has made that their priority as well. And they've worked very diligently to climb us back up that ladder. We've put a great deal of emphasis on performance incentives to where if we meet certain performance objectives, like percentage of kids visited in social services, for example, or number in the Child, Children's Services investigations completed timely, we get incentive money for that and we put that toward our budget and that's helped a great deal. And we'll continue to do that and we'll continue to explore other funding through grants and things like that. But I'm telling you as of today that, you know, without your support and some of these other things that we've attempted to take advantage of and have really, we'd be having much, much more dire conversation. But I am proud of the way that Brenda Newell, who's our Assistant Director/CFO, has spearheaded those objectives that I've laid out. And she, she could care less about the accolades. But, but as I've said, I've, I feel very lucky to have her. And she will be a definite asset with us moving forward. So again, we're just, you know, some of the other things beyond your support is, you know, they're going to be, the state's going to be monitoring our allocations and projections and costs more, more strictly. And we'll have to pay a different level of attention to that internally. We have to change our way of doing businesses with the, with the other administrators and in terms of how we approach spending and bringing money in. I mean, obviously, we don't make money, but there are ways for us to get inter-county transfers. For example, meetings that I go to, I feel like I almost always have my hand out for ten of money or things like that, asking other counties, can you give us this for this area of admin costs and things like that? And a lot of times, you know, we're very successful and sometimes everybody's out of pocket. So I am very mindful of that in moving forward. I know we have to continue to be responsible and creative in terms of what we do with our money. And nobody's on the ledge today, but I have a lot of work to do to make sure that, that that doesn't happen moving forward. And again, your, your help has been imperative towards our ability to, to, to be whole. So other than that, potentially just depressing messaging, are there questions that you have for me?
I appreciate the, where you've been able to bring us because you know, we, we had about a million and a half deficit not too long ago.
Right.
And so, you know, and I know we had, I think, maybe a hundred and twenty-five kids in that range.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, even though we have fewer kids, you know, those expenses where we're able to locate.
You get it. Yeah.
Has been a real thorn.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't tell the community, don't, you know, don't, don't make bad decisions. We have to take custody of our kids. And this myth that's still out there that we somehow get a monetary incentive for children to care, that, that, I don't want your kids in custody. I don't want your children involved in our agency if they don't have to be. We will help if that's what's necessary. But we're not driving down Kishakton Avenue looking to put kids in foster care. It's, it's an overwhelming expense for us because we're not the Franklin Counties of the world that have, you know, however many levies and they contract out all their services. And they just have, have so much money to spend. We're, we're not built for that. When we have a seventeen-year-old coming to care with, has a significant juvenile record and has substance abuse problem and all of these other behavioral challenges, you know, we're, we have to do a lot of work to find a safe place for that kid to be. So I'll see if I can break down the school vouchers by district and then you wanted.
How many siblings do we have?
Sibling groups for kids placed in care.
Yeah, it's really not the number of kids. It's, it's the severity of their case.
Right.
It's autistic.
It's thirty thousand a month.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand a month for, for two, for two kids.
Right.
You know, so that's, that's a big number. Are we still running about two hundred and fifty thousand a month in costs?
A little more than that, yeah, but.
It used to be between two fifty, three hundred, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I'd say two seventy-five is probably about what it's been.
It's a big number.
Yeah. And, and I mean, the other thing is, you know, I, you know, we've got four-year-old autistic twins. That's, that's not going to get better. It's going to get more challenging. But that's, there's no level of therapy that can reverse that. It's just, you know, they're going to get bigger and they're going to get more aggressive and they're going to get more physical. And then, you know, there's all those things that come along to it. And we embrace the, the idea that it's our responsibility to, to create safe spaces for them. But again, you know, these two, there's two, three, four more behind them tomorrow and we'll, we'll deal with that. Hopefully, we get some better clarification on, on some of these other questions that we have related to the way that we're funded through, through the state. Until then, we're preparing for as many different scenarios as we can to be ready for whatever comes down the pipeline. So again, thank you all for pre- your help and support and, and Jason, obviously, for when I need something, he's right there. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Oh, peace out here.
Hey, Fadi.
Good time.
How you showing?
So next we have, Brian, get your staff with us. Talk about where we are with our dog population and you're patrolling and policing them.
Yes, sir.
Keeping them where they should be.
Sir, that's.
Brian, thank you for being with us.
Yep. So the monthly report for August for the dog shelter, we had a total of twenty-eight dogs enter the shelter. Four of those were owner surrenders, twenty-three were strays, one was seized custody dog. We had a total of thirty-four dogs leave the shelter, twenty of those were adoptions, five were euthanases, eight were returned to their owner and one was transferred to a rescue. It should be noted that four of the five dogs euthanized in August were at the owner's request due to the dogs being aggressive, having a bite history or for medical reasons. And the one dog, the shelter euthanized, had been a volunteer and had a previous bite history. As of Wednesday, September seventeenth, there were fourteen dogs at the shelter and thirteen of those were available for adoption. One is currently on hold still as evidence of an animal neglect case. Out of the fourteen dogs at the shelter, seven are owner surrenders, six are stray dogs and one is, was seized from its owner because of animal neglect. There's a total of seven dogs at the shelter that have been at the shelter for over sixty days. And a total of ten citations were issued in the month of August. Deputy Tyler Moore issued three citations for failure to confine, two citations for failure license and one court summons for abandonment, two court summonses for animal cruelty and one citation for falsification. And Deputy Brooke Brown issued one citation for failure to control.
So you had people's boss buying.
Yes, we do have that from time to time, unfortunately. We try to hold people accountable if they come to the shelter and want to lie about where they found the dog or who it belongs to. So, yeah.
So person gets a dog, buys a dog at Puppy Heaven and they want to get a tag. So what's, what are the ways that they can get the tags for their dogs?
Yeah, absolutely. You could come into the shelter. You could go to the auditor's office here.
The shelter's on Columbus Road.
Yeah.
For those who.
Yeah, that, two A five Columbus Road and we're open from ten to four, Monday through Saturday. They can go online and purchase that on the website.
Your, your website or the county's website?
So it'd be the county's website under the dog shelter tab. Or they could go to the Knox County Auditor's Office here at the Service Center and get those tags there. So.
Sounds to me like your countdown, which sounds good.
Yeah, right now. Yeah, right now, um, knock on wood, but yeah, we've had a lot of adoptions recently, which has been really great, so.
And that other report you gave us, Brian, I know you've been working on this, but the last few years, definitely the. Purchasing of dog bags is up, so people are. We, we knew that there were lots of people that had dogs that weren't tagging them and it looks like you're working through that and. Um, correcting that a little bit, so that's good.
Yeah, we're trying to get, just educate people on why you need to have a license and just what that go, what goes into that. Um, I don't know if you saw the flyer we have out on the table at the service center, but we kinda have this little uh. Campaign to try to promote dog licenses. I know that, I think all the vet's offices in Knox County have them up at their uh, at their clinics and. The pet stores have them up and so I'm just trying to get.
You did a QR code or something, right?
Got QR codes that can take you straight to the.
Yeah, cause it looks like since twenty-one, you're up about fifteen hundred tags.
Yeah, so I think there was a little concern about moving from sixteen dollars to twenty, but we really haven't seen a drop off in. People purchasing tags, so.
Yeah. And they can use their credit card out to replace them?
Yes, they can. Um, there's a service fee involved, but that's just, and then if you do it online as well, um, there's a processing fee as well.
Good.
And the county does not receive any of that. That's for the third-party administrator. We just give the twenty bucks.
Yeah.
Hey, thank.
Yeah, nice job.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Be back, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a master subscription agreement with no before for I T security services. And and you prep this for cyber training, Craig.
Yes.
That goes out to all staff each year, so this contract is ready to go. It's nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. And we do get uh, usually about a four thousand dollar reimbursement per course uh, uh, for our liability coverage for having this, so.
Wonder how that can be put to the course.
Yep.
So that, that training is of the.
It's each county, yeah, so you'll, they'll send out like fake emails. You might get a fake email, see if somebody clicks on it. You know, it's like, and then there is some training that you go on there and actually take a security training as well.
And I understand that this kind of tie into our course of requirements.
It is required to get our uh, rebates, but then of course it does reimburse a part of that for accounts.
So that training that we did is no condition, there's online, that was there.
That's, that's a different train.
Well, that one might have been, you might have been, they probably had to do a no before.
They, yeah, at some point, you probably had to do a no before and, again, you may have periodically run across some. Uh, suspicious emails, some phishing attempts that just try to kind of keep everything fresh.
So if you hit that, you get a warning that you opened the bad email.
Yeah, usually um, it'll actually alert us if you open one of their training. So we are aware that if, if you've opened one of the test emails and then we can kinda just say. Hey, what are, here's some things to look for.
Then your keyboard shocks you.
Yeah.
Well, you have to look at your emails in order to get that done. In order to get a spam, you have to look at your emails, so.
Yeah, but yes.
And you quarantine some emails, so those obviously are not the ones you're trying to trip and send.
No, yeah, yeah, when no before is actually doing the tests, they get through the quarantine. We give them a free pass, so.
Yeah. So that's ready for your approval.
Motion. Our motion approved.
Second.
In those favors, say aye.
We have a utility permit for Lickinge Royal Electric, uh, on Peterville Road in Brown Township.
Motion fifth.
Second. Those favors, say aye.
The uh, Knox County Sheriff's Office submitted their twenty twenty-four annual report. Uh, and so this doesn't, doesn't sign, but we just need a resolution that. You have received it and we'll enter it into the record.
Motion fifth.
Uh, did we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
It's on there, okay. I have, you had a chance to handle it. I approve. Motion approved.
It's from, um, Schaefer from.
From Schaefer.
Yeah, well, cause it's twenty twenty-four. It mostly has hit, the prior sheriff's in bow in there, but with.
Did Dan tag anything of his own in there?
Well, they had to put all the full year statistics and stuff in there.
Okay.
So, but basically Sheriff Schaefer was in a sense, he went on, you know, like the letter to the citizens of his own sheriff, the prior sheriff. Um, for what was done out there last.
Gotcha.
So I made a motion to approve this.
Do you have a second? Second. In those favors, say aye.
Then we have a rescinding and replaced resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirteen. This was kind of a, a weird thing, but we. So you designate uh, Scott, the director, John Family Services to uh. Sort of kind of designate when he signed an inter-agency agreement. So the way the resolution was written that we always do, it says that you're authorizing effective January one in twenty twenty-five. You were authorizing Scott to do this on behalf of Knox County for year twenty twenty-five. Seems pretty self-explanatory to me, but the state wanted it to say effective January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Instead of. For year twenty twenty-five. So we are rescinding the original resolution and saying, instead of through twenty twenty-five. Or for, instead of saying for year twenty twenty-five, we're gonna say through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So I motioned to approve.
Second.
Those favors, say aye.
Now we kinda got a penny a little with them. No comment, okay. Approved the Lickinge County Trauma Informed Community Cooperative Agreement. This is um, with Knox County Children's Services that joins with Lickinge and Knox County Trauma. And as far as their leadership committee and. This is ready for, this is just basically a cooperation agreement that you need to prove that they're gonna cooperate together.
Motion approved.
Second.
In those favors, say aye.
Yeah, just like got a couple sets of minutes, transfer and refill list. And I don't have anything else. We went to your projects last week or on Tuesday, so I've got nothing else for you today.
Guys, then uh, we did receive a, a letter uh, from the Knox County Agriculture Museum for that fairgrounds. Um, they are expressing their appreciation for the contributions that the commissioners have provided to them. Because uh, those funds helped them maintain the, the buildings that they have out there and it's ended their um. Security and for view, so wanted to let everyone know that we did receive that from the Knox County Agriculture with we use it.
Yeah, in our traditional fund and then it's simply been five thousand dollars a year. So they run that, now he owns the building and that on fairground. The last two years, the commissioners have given this then fifteen thousand to put that entry in for each year towards. And that's enough, some issues we have with the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so are there other things, um?
We attended Barry Knight's Indian American Prayer Breakfast yesterday, and mine was excellent. And his message was from the Father of God, the Easinesses. It's great for people here. That coronation was excellent. And then last night, he worked his old Ford moving, uh, toward the hangar there that's beautiful, come along, right? And I just mentioned the economic jobs and time that it has to attract preparations for jobs. For our community, we appreciate.
Very, anything?
No, sure.
And this afternoon, I will be doing my monthly meeting with the government. Um, association and we'll be talking about tiger security. Since that's gonna be a hot button for all the um, institutions. If there's no other thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we stay in the journey. Everyone have a great weekend. Thank you.